Good evening and welcome to this, the September 25th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. This is kind of a special meeting and let the roll show that all of the members of the council are present and accounted for. As I said, this is kind of a special meeting because this is celebrating the Super Readers. This is the culmination of the summer reading program and this is one of the fun things that we get to do. So I'd like to hand it over to our librarian, Tamara LeBeau. So you have some comments?
Yes, good evening Mayor Marchand and council members. I'm Tamara LeBeau, your library services director, and I'm here tonight to present the Super Readers for the library's 2017 Summer Reading Program. Over 4,000 residents participated in our summer reading programs this year. 909 of the children who participated completed the full program to become our Super Readers. It's wonderful and we're very grateful that you're taking the time to congratulate our Super Readers tonight. Before we begin however, I would like to thank a few of our sponsors whose donations helped make the summer reading program possible. Thank you to Bay Area Discovery Museum, LARPD, Tri-Valley Ice, Grenada Bowl, Foster's Freeze, Ross McDonald, InMind Designs, Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory, the San Francisco Giants, Robot Garden, and of course, the Friends of the Livermore Library. So with that, we're ready to introduce our Super Readers if you want to join us down Stop her there.
Wait, hold on a second. Wait. You gotta get on behind you.
(laughing).
Careful. Wait, wait, wait. Wait, wait, wait. Excellent. You get to be first.
Where are we getting?
Yeah, wherever. That's good.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started in alphabetical order with Sierra Abersole.
That's Sierra.
Congratulations.
Ella Abey. Olivia Abey. Dylan Acosta.
I have two medals.
Riley Adams.
A little more towards me, please. A little more towards me.
Anastasia Agiri. Natasha Agiri. Zoe Alcas. Alcasay?
Congratulations.
Alcasay. Is that better? Okay, go for it.
Congratulations.
Andreas Alexander. Julia Alexander. Troy Albert. Alexis Day. Chloe Alvis. Jackson Alvis. Alexis Amaral. Sonia Amiri. Dominic Anderson. Johnny Armstrong. Nathine Aruswami. Jay Lee Eterberry. Lilly Eterberry. Raquel Aurelio. Sophia Aurelio. Ariaman Aswathy. Riddya Aswathy. Eugene Baker. Manya Barsinas. Suzie Beeman. Adeline Vissera. Bailey Vissera. And Camia Vissera. Gabriella Bibb. Jake Blaschek. Jasmine Blaschek. Nicholas Blaschek. Alexis Bond. Colin Bond. Isabel Bond. Lauren Bond. Evan Brendlin. Deborah Brightley. Corinne Butterfield. Carson Butterfield. Jay Cabrera. Brayden Callahan. Lucas Carter. Olivia Carter. Nicholas Cardinal. Keen Car. Carvin Car. Chance Carter. Kalen Carter. Blake Cass. Ellie Chang. I'm gonna wait just a minute. Till they get caught up. Let them get caught up on their names. Dakota Chaka. Chaka. Diego Chaka. Okay, okay, go ahead.
Congratulations.
Is it Maia? Maya? Maya? Maya Chiolis. Chloe Schwennard. Not? Hi! And Connor Schwennard. Schwinnard. Schwinnard. I should know that.
That's okay.
McKinley Klaus.
Turn around guys. Turn around.
Yay!
Kennedy Coley. Tatum Conover. Zenon Andrews. Aurelia Correa. Corleen Crawford. Daniel Crossit. And Ethan Crossit. Or Crissette, is that right? Crossit? Crossit? Wow, I got it right the first try. Colton Crouch. Trevor Crouch. Adela Kuckler. Is that right? Victor Curtis. Gabriel Gabriel, I'm sorry Dale. Matthew Dale. Abigail Darling. I can't see the number. Okay. Danica Day.
Lyra Day.
Lyra Day. Emily Davis.
They're actually the same last name.
Over here. Danica.
Nathan Dempsey. And Sean Dempsey. Angelina DePiero. Julia DePiero. Leonardo DeZuberia. Oh, good. Nitesh Danush Kumar. Danush Kumar?
You don't know?
Nitesh Danush Kumar?
No.
Danush. Okay, Danish Kumar.
Oh, that's a good one.
Nathiyasri Danish Kumar? Nitesri Danish Kumar? Nalan Darmaraj? Darmaraj? Okay. Go ahead. Katherine Diaz-Lorenco? Davy Drogshoff? Ellen Drowin? Drowin? Cooper Easton? Eli Easton? Camille Ellis?
Real bronze, yeah.
Can you move your thing? Christina Ellis? Go ahead. 236, okay. Kate Ellsworth? Ashoi Ishak? Demiana Ishak?
Congratulations.
Addie Estrada? Christian Pham? Greta Fickfurlot?
Oh, good, you'll get that quick.
Niels Spidler? Fidler? Fidler, Niels Fidler. Audrey Findling? Emily Ford? Rebecca Ford? Brooklyn Fowler? Trent Jalen Francisco? Close enough. Cole Gable? Dylan Garcia? Gavin Garcia? Mia Garassi? Dorasi? I did not, no. Cooper Gibb? Alexis Gillan? Maggie Gleason? Isabel Garas? Garasay? Peter Grabowski? 273. Yunis Gani? Yes. Just a minute. Delaney Gordon? Roman Graschev? Ooh, he's way out of his place. Nikolai Nazarov? Oliver Griffin? Camille Grandowski? Savannah Guy? Nicholas Ha? Brooke Harper? Angelina Harris? Bridgette Harris? Can I see your name tag? Maddie Harris? Okay, just a minute. Let them take a picture first. Mia Harrison? Can I see it, please? Can I see your name tag so I can read your name? Elliot! Marcell Hashimi? Amelie Herr? Nadia Herr?
Avery Hacey? And Jack Hacey?
All right.
That was the first no.
Okay, let's wait just a minute.
Just a second, we'll wait till they take a picture. Charles Harrington? Aswin Holt? Aislinn Holt? Tigwen Holt? Tigen Holt?
Is that a lot of fun?
Okay, you can go meet the mayor now. And Aaron Holt? Ooh, look at all your medals! Svetta Halunga? Halanga? Erin Hoyt? Alyssa Hoyt, is that Alyssa? Alyssa Hoyt. Jesse Henziger? Elena Ibarra? Elena Ibarra? Leah Inoue? McKenna Inoue? Joseph Itani? Avi Ayer? Giovanni Hara? Is it Hara? Hara, Giovanni Hara. Jonathan Hara. Charles Jeffries? Lilian Jeffries? Karis Geon? Is that right? Candace Cho? Can I see your name tag? Seon Kendaya, is that right? Seon Kendaya. Dylan Candle? Candle. Shayna Candle?
Well done.
Pamir Kavayani? Close enough? Adam Kimmel? And Kobe Kimmel?
You already have two?
Georgia Kirk? And Leah Kirk? Emily Klein? Jonah Koziemski? Koziemski, I gave you an extra Koziem... Simon Koziemski! Brayden Kreitzman? Did I say that right? Kalen Kukuhiko? Kaden Cooper? Gregory Laney? Ooh, I like your hat. Damian Latora?
Alright.
Can I see your name tag? Can you move your jacket for a sec?
Wow, you'll get 500 this year.
Juliana Levy? Lobby. Mandy Lawrence? Victoria Leeds Pilchowski? Pilchowski! So Ina? Anna Lim? Can I see your name tag? I don't see. Sally Lim. Ava Linhart? Jackson Liu? Casey Liu? Can I see your number on your name tag? Can you move your medal? Thank you. Avery Lockhart? Joey Lopez Dunn? Is it Ani? Ani Luong? Ankheim? Luong? Ankham? Luong? Luong! Ansthi Luong?
Joey?
Amri Johnson? Okay, just a minute. Let's let them take a picture and then I'll read your name.
Do it again next year?
Is it Masses or Macias? Is it Masses or Macias?
Gerardo Macias. Katie Madsen. Ara Mahajan?
There we go. We found him!
Verain Mahajan? Arjun Mangadu? Kamila Mangadu? Luke Martinez? Connor Mathis? Clara, is it Clara? Clara McGowan? Sebastian Mena? Anaya Maynan? Abe Mercer? Alexander Miku? Sophia Miller? Anshika Maital? Is that wrong? Can I see your name? It's what? Maital? Arsha Maital? Brianna Milocek? Jacqueline Morris? Bo Muela? Tanner Muela? Let's wait for the picture, just a minute. Eric Moore? Natalia Moore? Ruby Neal? And Stella Neal? Is it Non or not? Charlotte Non? Miles O'Donnell? And Olivia O'Donnell? Emily O'Hara? Addison Olson? Is that right? No? Olchazy? Can I see your name tag? Martin Olson? Okay. Adeline Ong? Rosio Ortiz? Gavin Oberman? Anna Pacheco? Jacob Padilla? Kai, is that right? Parsons? Keb Parsons? Aisha Parwess? Sumaya Parwess? Penelope Pascal? Pascal? Arna Patel? Is that correct? Elena Polly? Lucia Polly? Samantha Payne? Zachary Payne? Let's hold up just a second. Okay. Lucas Peert? And Ryan Peert? Sarah Pepperd? Evie Pepper? Robert Pepper? Joynell Perry? Can I see your number, please? Carly Patelka? Liam Pitt? Okay. Just hold up just a minute. We'll wait for the pictures. Sophie Plummer? Penelope Portillo? Did I say that wrong? Okay. Anna Susan Praveen? Imani Pryor? Danica Proctor? Jaden Crusoe? Shalini Punakar? Is that right? No? Shalini? Riley Purcell? Emma Rackley? Sanjana Rao? Sanjana Rao? Benjamin Raskin? And Madeline Raskin? Samantha Reynolds? Rudy Roa? Victoria Roa? Ryan Roberts? Ridge Rout? Is it Rout? Ridge Rout. Ooh, look at all your medals! Joseph Sein? Is that right? Sein. We're getting autographs! Colton Salamida? Kaitlyn Solonga? Anna Sandu? Lucia San Giorgio? Jacob Scanlon? Lyla Scanlon? Echo Schmidt? Ashlyn Seeley? And Paige Seeley? Donovan Segura? Segura? Marissa Segura? Or is it Marissa? Marissa Segura? Fiona Shen? Emily Silva? Scarlett Sils? Natasch Nakshatra Singh? Did I say that right? Okay.
Gerardo Macias. Katie Madison. Arav Mahajan. Verain Mahajan. Arjun Mangadu. Camilla Mangadu. Luke Martinez. Connor Mathis. Clara, is it Clara? Clara McGowan. Sebastian Mena. Anaya Maynan. Abe Mercer. Alexander Miku. Sophia Miller. Anshika Maithal. Is that wrong? Can I see your name? It's what? Maithal? Arshia Maithal. Brianna Milocek. Jacqueline Morris. Beau Muela. Tanner Muela. Let's wait for the picture, just a minute. Eric Moore. Natalia Moore. Ruby Neal. Stella Neal. Is it Non or not? Charlotte Non. Miles O'Donnell. And Olivia O'Donnell. Emily O'Hara. Addison Olson, is that right? No. Olchazy. Can I see your name tab? Martin Olson. Okay. Adeline Ong. Is it? Rosio Ortiz. Gavin Oberman. Anna Pacheco. Jacob Padilla. Kai, is that right? Parsons. Keb Parsons. Ayesha Parwess. Sumaya Parwess. Penelope Pascal. Pascal. Arna Patel, is that correct? Elena Polly. Lucia Polly. Samantha Payne. Zachary Payne. Let's hold up just a second. Locas Peert. And Ryan Peert. Sarah Pepperd. Evie Pepper. Robert Pepper. Joynell Perry. Can I see your number, please? Carly Patelka. Liam Pitt. Just hold up just a minute, we'll wait for the pictures. Sophie Plummer. Penelope Portillo. Did I say that wrong? Okay. Anna Susan Praveen. Imani Pryor. Danica Proctor. Jaden Crusoe. Shalini Punakar, is that right? No? Shalini. Riley Purcell. Emma Rackley. Sanjana Rao. Sanjana Rao. Benjamin Raskin. And Madeline Raskin. Samantha Reynolds. Rudy Roa. Victoria Roa. Ryan Roberts. Ridge Routt, is it Routt? Ridge Routt. Oh, look at all your medals. Joseph Sain, is that right? Sain. We're getting autographs. Colton Salamida. Caitlin Solonga. Anna Sandu. Lucia San Giorgio. Jacob Scanlon. Lila Scanlon. Echo Schmidt. Ashlyn Sealy. And Paige Sealy. Donovan Segura. Segura. Marissa Segura? Or is it Marissa? Marissa Segura. Fiona Shen. Emily Silva. Scarlett Sils. Natasha Nakshatra Singh, did I say that right? Okay. Isaac Sousa. And Shelby Sousa. Emma Spencer. Let's wait just a minute. Jacob St. Dennis. Not yet. Yes. Noah St. Dennis. Jalen Strand. Preston Seuss. Sees? Oh, I'm too used to Dr. Seuss, aren't I? I'm a librarian. Finley Sif. Finley Sife. Is it Tellis or Tellis? Karen Tellis. Okay, let's wait just a minute. Xavier Thayer. Loi Thomas, is that right? Frances Thornberry Sherod, is that right? Gabrielle Torres, Gabrielle Torres. Too many names, huh? Shelby Torres. Hui? Wait till they shake hands. Okay. Hui Tran. Leila Twiss. Just a minute till they get to. Silas Twiss. Namdi Ugorji. Is it Jonathan? Jonathan Ugorji. Sean Malone. Zachary Vales. Yara Venezuela Reyes. Madison Stout. Noah Ventura. Vinnevik. Sierra Vinnevik. Emmy Visaya, is that right? Visaya? Grant Von Heeder. Jesseline Wallia. Sahib Wallia. River Vander Kamp. Samhita Del Nati, is that right? Kind of? Claire Warmerdam. Anya Weiss. Rowan Weiss. Stella Wedig Raza. Colin Whitstone. Michaela Whitstone. Lots of medals, wow. Impressive. Justina White. Robert Whitlock. Brooke Willis. Jacob Wallaber. Jane Wu. Taylor White. Anthony Yazurlo, is that right? Is it Zeng? Brian Zeng. Can I see your medal? Oh, I mean your... Yes. Jaime Zaragoza, is that right? Okay. Okay. Justin Sipton. Sanskriti Agarwal, is that right? No? Yes? Savannah Wydeck. Madhuri Zaveri. Is that it? Okay, so that brings us to the end of our readers. Congratulations to all of our 2017 Super Readers.
At this point, we're going to take a quick break and then reset the room and we'll be back in about five minutes. Thank you. Okay. Part two, good evening and welcome back to the Livermore City Council of September 25th. If you're just joining us, we just got through the Livermore Super Reader Program. There were over 4,000 students that went through the program and there were about 920 that completed the program and I think we just shook hands with all 900. So, this is some of the fun stuff that we get to do. So, we're starting the second half of the meeting and let the roll calls show that once again, all of the members of the council are present and accounted for. I'd like to ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. I don't believe we have any proclamations or presentations tonight, so on to the Citizens Forum. These are items that are not on the agenda. The city council can neither deliberate nor take action on any of these items. And I ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less. First is John Stein, Dave McQuiggin, and David Williams. Mr. Stein.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. I'd like to thank staff and the developer of the project on the corner of Vasco and East Avenue for planting the rosebush, replanting the rosebush that was there for forty, at least forty years and probably longer. It doesn't look very good now, I guess transplant shock and the hot weather killed it back down to the roots, but it looks like it is coming back and if taken care of in a year or two, should be thriving. So, thank you again. In regard to both the North and South Livermore plans, the plans are now reaching adulthood. I mean, it's been twenty some odd years since the South Livermore Plan and fifteen years since the North Livermore Plan were put in place. And a number of things have changed. One of them is both the state and Zone Seven are increasingly concerned about groundwater quality and either septic tanks or package sewer plants. So, various users out in the South Livermore Plan at least are asking for connections to city services. Byer Ranch, Concanon, and probably gradually over time, most of the other larger wineries will be requesting it. Also, Doolin Canyon has been looking for water service for at least two droughts now. So, I would urge that rather than leaving it up to the individual property owners and city staff, you have a workshop that involves the people who were originally involved in establishing these plans to set up some guidelines. This would include environmental groups, property owners, the city of Pleasant and the county, Zone Seven, and of course, the city of Livermore and all the people who voted to establish the urban growth boundary, Measure D, and the South Livermore Plan. And come up with some guidelines as to whether we want to annex, which would give the city more control, or extend the services with binding agreements that would limit the use to, the uses that are permitted under the South Livermore Plan and the North Livermore Plan. In other words, in the North Livermore, no expansion of residential, the same as the South Livermore with the requirement that it be agriculturally related uses. I think this would be a good plan going forward. I don't think it would be that expensive. I think it could be done by city staff and a couple of workshops and maybe a special city council meeting. But at some point, if we do it piecemeal, we could lose a lot of the benefits that were put in place a generation ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. David McQuiggin, David Williams, Kevin Cohn.
On June 26th, we learned of the interference in the trial of ex-officer Dan Black. We've heard some supposed explanations for that interference that quite frankly, are not very compelling. We've heard this was just a common courtesy afforded to all officers. However, this is certainly a very uncommon case. When you listen to Mr. Alcala's explanations, you realize he discussed how such an atrocity could be accomplished. They knew nothing to explain why. The last time Mayor Marchand informed us that there was no council vote directing this interference. And as far as I know, outside a council vote, there really only two people who can direct the city attorney to do something, the city manager and the mayor. I don't believe our city manager would do something so controversial as to interfere in the trial of a sexual predator without the mayor's approval. So, it's clear the direction of the interference to interfere came from the mayor. Mr. Cal has been quoted as saying Livermore prides itself in protecting officers' information. Well, the information being protected has been reported to include charges of recording a woman while having sex without consent, having sex with a person under the influence, a child custody dispute, and a suspected child abuse report. Mayor Marchand, why do you pride yourself in protecting this person? This was not a common courtesy. This man exploited a teenage girl. There is no, was no legal or moral requirement to defend his behavior, and in fact, you'd hope just the opposite. Please, Mayor Marchand, please help us understand why you directed the interference in the trial of a man described by the DA as a sexual predator. And let's see if you can be honest this time. And while you're at it, you can clear up one more thing from last time. When you, Mayor John Marchand, publicly stated there were no allegations of child abuse, was that before or after you, Mayor John Marchand, had the child abuse report suppressed?
Just one please, point of order. I'm sorry, these are accusations of me interfering with an investigation and obstructing justice. So, I would like to make a point to, a point of order to the, to our acting council tonight.
Yes, Mayor.
Are these types of accusations protected under the First Amendment or under Citizens Forum?
So, there is a First Amendment free speech right, everyone can speak what they will, but we do request respect of everyone, but there is a free speech right to...
No, this is a direct accusation of obstruction of justice. And I don't believe that that is protected.
I don't know how you said it was obstruction of justice. I asked how you directed the ma, or the...
Precisely.
The layer.
Please, continue your comments.
I didn't say you obstructed justice. I said you have directed your lawyer to suppress evidence. You were legally intended to do that.
Please finish your comments.
I did.
Okay. Thank you very much. David Williams, Kevin Cohn, Holly Roberts.
Good evening. I believe that a downtown hotel may be another mistake like the Regional Theater, the Jetport, and BART. The big national successful hotel companies are building their hotels out by the freeway. Hotels are often noisy at night. Every weekday morning, thousands of Central Valley residents commute two hours each way to Silicon Valley. Down Concanon and Holmes in South Livermore. It's a pity that the empty vacant neighborhood park, office park, cannot be used for some of them. The city would receive much more in the way of taxes than converting those into housing. I believe after many years, that Livermore has outgrown its city council. We need to do much more commercial research before. We have now five very poorly paid volunteer city council members. I believe that we would be better off with three council members that were paid full time and took a hand in the management. All city employees should be residents. I can add that like when the vacant lot was created downtown, had you done your research, you would have rented a fence and corrected, collected a lot of money for people parking a dollar or two dollars in the evening down there. Since then. Had the bank head been done with a lot of research, you might have copied the Radio City Music Hall, which has made money each and every year for over eighty years. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Kevin Cohn, Holly Roberts. Mr. Cohn.
Greetings, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I appreciate the opportunity to come and address you today. My name is Kevin Cohn, father of five, and the volunteer vice president of Livermore Little League Baseball. It is in this capacity I've come to address the council today. Livermore Little League has a current membership of just over 700 children, ages four to sixteen, spanning central and east Livermore. We're the product of two recently merged Little League programs. The two programs remaining in Livermore are Granada Little League and Livermore Little League. The hundreds of volunteers of our league serve our community by providing an equal opportunity for every child, regardless of their financial situation, to participate in our baseball program. We pay for this program through membership dues and fundraising. For nearly fifty years, that's what I'm told, I'm not that old yet, I'm told that the Livermore Little League has called the fields behind Junction School home. We have poured hundreds of thousands of dollars into that facility over these many years. Currently, we're spending roughly sixty to seventy thousand dollars a year to maintain those fields. fields playable for our youth. Unfortunately, as we started our new board and we started looking at the financials, we began to learn that we were actually funding the watering of half, if not more, of the entire property of Behind Junction School to the tune of sixteen thousand dollars a year. We're also funding various field improvements, garbage to the tune of nine thousand, and other services and utilities. For us as a nonprofit, this burden is quite heavy. We have also learned that Granada Little League, whose fields are behind Menon Hall and go to Max Bear Park, don't have to foot those types of bills. They don't pay for the water or the mowing of the lawn. So what we like to have is to be treated fairly and consistently between the two programs so that we can direct our limited resources to providing an improvement to the facility there. Currently, there's a hundred and fifty yard dirt gravel trail after that our parents and our grandparents, many, some of whom have walkers and wheelchairs, they have to park maybe two blocks away, walk across the streets, and then push their walker through this gravel road. We got a quote for twenty-five thousand dollars to pave that, which we feel like we have done a good job fundraising and the money for. When posed to the deputy superintendent, he gave us a quote for three hundred thousand dollars to do the same work. Also, in our effort to put bathrooms in, flushing toilets, just a couple, maybe three of them, we were given a quote for four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars to do that work. And then we were given a lot of red tape. I would ask that we have some point to deliberate and have these concerns addressed. Thank you for allowing me this time.
Thank you, Mr. Cohn. Perfect timing. Holly Roberts.
I have a question.
Yes.
So the property and, not for you, but for the staff, who owns the property that's being talked about there?
The Junction Fields.
I don't. Microphone.
I'm not sure, but I do not believe it's the city property. It sounds more like Liar PD.
It's the school district.
Yeah, I believe that property is owned by the Livermore joint, Livermore School District.
So I just want to point out, we don't have any jurisdiction with respect to that.
Have you spoken with the school district?
I have, and I'm negotiating with the deputy superintendent, who is pushing us through some interesting situations.
Okay.
Would my comments better be suited for the school district board? Is that who you'd recommend I go to?
School district, and then also as far as Max Bear, probably the Parks District, Liar PD, because Liar PD manages the parks.
Yeah, we run fields from Liar PD, and it's two entities separate.
Yeah, okay.
Right, I just pointed out because, you know, I've been here a long time, and I still get confused as to who owns what. But we've got three governmental agencies that kind of govern Livermore. It's the school district, the park district, and the city. And people kind of, it's helpful to know who owns what and to who you have to kind of appeal to to get stuff done. But I don't think we, the city, has anything to do with what you were talking about.
Very good, thank you. Holly Roberts, sorry about that.
Hello, my name is Holly Roberts. I own a drop-in play school in the Carnegie Building in downtown Livermore. Tiny Tykes Play School on Demand is just that, a place parents can bring their children to socialize and learn through creative play without the commitment of enrollment or the non-refundable fees of a traditional preschool. Parents use this on an as-needed basis for their children as young as twelve months up to five years old. A drop-in play school is very helpful to families who, for one reason or another, have no place to bring their children when they have appointments, meetings, part-time work, interviews, or other places that would be difficult to take a child. In the four years I have been in the Carnegie Building, I have seen the numbers of children who attend naturally ebb and flow, and I've also seen homeless people on the grounds of Carnegie Park during that time. However, beginning this past spring, I have seen the homeless situation explode, and at the same time, I have seen the numbers of families using my play school significantly drop. Last fall, the number of children who attended Tiny Tykes averaged at twelve a day. This fall, that number dropped to an average of just three children per day. Traditionally, September and October are busier months that I count on to help cover costs during our slower times. I did not make enough money this September to do that, and October is not looking to be much better because of the homeless situation. In fact, my income has dropped so much that it has become a hardship to keep my doors open, and I am facing permanent closure if something does not change soon. Over the past few weeks, more and more parents have expressed their concerns about the amount of homeless people sleeping and living in the park. Parents have told me that they wait in their car for up to half an hour to avoid walking past homeless people who are often fighting with each other or yelling out loud to no one in particular. Families have witnessed a homeless woman washing her clothes and bathing in the beautiful fountain a few yards from our door, a favorite play spot for our families, before and after they come to Tiny Tykes. One little girl almost got sprayed with urine because a homeless woman pulled down her pants and peed on the wall right next to the window above our playroom. Parents and small children have witnessed homeless people pee in the grate directly in front of our door as they come and go from Tiny Tykes. Employees have also witnessed homeless women stripping down naked to change their clothes in front of our door during times when Tiny Tykes is open. I have had to clean up food garbage, extremely personal items, bras and panties, and drug paraphernalia. I have even had to clean up human feces deposited right in front of our door. The children have no choice but to walk over this grate, which continually smells like urine every time they come and go from my place of business, and there is nothing I can do about it. I can call the police, but they can't be there in time to witness what is happening. I am losing customers at an alarming rate, and if it continues, I will have to close my doors. Please understand, many of our families have no other place to take their children on a drop-in basis. Most of our families have circumstances in which traditional "pay before you go" and "lose if you don't use" policies don't work for them. Although using Tiny Tykes is not free, the flexibility it provides is a service that is greatly needed in our town and would be sorely missed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Directly question to Mr. Uranga. We have recently hired what I refer to as our homelessness czar within the last month or two, correct?
Yes, our new homeless specialist will be on board probably within the next few weeks.
Okay.
But in the meantime, we work closely with both services and the police department, and we'll go out there and check on the situation and see what we could do to remedy.
Okay, so if you could continue to remain, if you could continue to contact the city, and if you could perhaps talk to Mr. Uranga, he can give you his contact information.
Okay, could I submit my papers to him?
He's director of our, director of our human services, so this is, thank you for bringing that, thank you for bringing it back to our attention. Something that we are aware of, and it's, as you can imagine, it's something that's very difficult to try to get a handle on, but we are continuing to work at it, and I will tell you, this council is committed to work to solve this. Thank you. Okay, that's it for the Citizens Forum cards. Moving on to the consent calendar, these are items typically of a routine nature that are non-controversial and are typically adopted with one vote. Is there anyone from the council, let's just pull any item for discussion?
Yeah, I do have one item, just for a quick comment. Let me get the number. Five point, four point, yeah, four point eight, four point oh eight.
Okay, four point oh eight.
Just for a quick comment.
Okay.
I guess it's.
No, if you have a comment for four point oh eight, I have a card for four point oh seven. So what we could do is, let's, you can make your comment for four point oh eight, I will ask for a motion for the consent calendar, and then we can hear the comments on four point oh seven.
It was just a quick comment for four point oh eight. I just wanted to compliment staff on the work and getting things repaired and working with FEMA. We're up to, now it's five point eight million in flood damage from the last storms, and they weren't, I mean, they were significant storms, but that's, that's a lot of damage, that's a lot of work. And I just wanted to commend staff on going after the FEMA grant opportunities and the claims. It's not an easy task, and we need to get those culverts and trails repaired as soon as possible, so thank you. I see the number climbing, and it's just, it's a shame. Thank you.
And you absolutely have to document every expense and every, every component along the way, because if FEMA can come back a couple of years later and say, you know, we went back over the numbers, and you have to pay us the money back. So this is one of the reasons that we have to maintain such oversight over these activities and repairs.
And also reserve fund levels, so we have the money to repair and then wait for FEMA to reimburse us. If not, we'd be up a creek, so to speak, but.
You have to say that.
Making sure, yeah. It's a creek. We have many creeks where the damage is occurring, but, you know, and at the same time, I also know with all the other disasters happening in the nation, FEMA is accelerating things and wanting to get paperwork and projects done and everything completed, so thank you for hanging in there and making sure we're getting the best scenario that we can to get that five point eight and climbing back.
Okay, with that, I do have a card for four point oh seven, so what I would like to do is to consider the consent calendar, four point oh one to, and four point oh eight, but we'll pull four point oh seven for comment.
I'll move we accept the consent calendar with the exception of four point oh seven.
Okay, move by Councilmember Carling.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Werner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Passed unanimously. Okay, four point oh seven, Ms. Cops.
So four point oh seven and five point oh one, they pertain to the same address, which is 754 North Livermore Avenue. And as I'm understanding this, that's Livermore wants to annex that property, but it's Alameda County property. I know Alameda County bought some property in nineteen seventy-three for the highway, and basically, I'm confused at the history on that particular parcel, and I'm not even sure if that's the particular parcel. But what I do notice is that on the map page, there's a disclaimer on the bottom of the map, and it basically refers to that this is data that was taken from the, I forget what it's called, is it GIS, the tracking whatever? And that's been unreliable in the past, and so I would like more attention to be paid to the historical ownership of that land, to see if there was any past obligations. I think that in all transactions that Livermore does in Alameda County, basically, and just due to the fact that, you know, what the gentleman was saying about the Little League, where, you know, a lot of the agencies, you know, you work together a lot, and so a lot can get lost in the confusion, the shuffle, past deals. I know, like, you know, like, even with, like, some of the issues now, you're dealing with many agencies in conglomeration a lot, but then sometimes these agencies, you know, don't work, you know, together. And where that's frustrating is like when something is working together and you're trying to make a point that no one has a clue about. So I'm asking that, and I think John even brought it up today, past generations, there were probably some different, I want to say, just deals on land and that, and I just think we're passing up sequoia a little too much, and I just think our environment is real important, and I think that people are so busy, you know, in their lives, it's really hard sometimes to pay attention to, you know, details that really could affect the outcome of something that could affect you, but if you don't come to these meetings and say something, you know, there, you know, it's too late. And so I really am asking from now on to do the secret reports, to bring up the history of the land, to make sure that there are no past obligations, to make sure that whatever happens going forward really is on the up and up, and people are aware of what's going on, so they don't find out something later that they're disappointed with. Thank you.
You're just having fun over there. Okay, I guess, wow. So the question about how certain are we as to the ownership and the title? Okay, we've got Andy Ross and Steve Stewart here. How certain are we as to the title? Ms. Cops made the comment that this map is based on city of Livermore GIS information and reflects the most current information at the time of this printing. The map is intended for reference purposes, and the city and staff are not responsible for errors or omissions. So how certain are we as to the title and ownership of this and the providence of this piece of land?
The application involves a subdivision, and anytime we deal with subdivision in the city, we do require a current title report, which our experts will review in-house to make sure there are no past restrictions or obligations on the property from that perspective. Regarding the map, that disclaimer is, one of the intention, intent there is to inform folks that the lines on the map are usually within a foot or two, but to verify exactly where those lines on the map are typically requires a survey or confirmation of a record of survey. So that's the disclaimer purpose.
Okay, and four point oh seven is actually to allow the current, current review of the general plan amendment, pre-zonian annexation. It's not actually considering the project. So this just allows both elements of the plan to move forward concurrently. Is that correct?
I'll move four point oh seven.
Okay.
Second.
Move by Councilmember Warner, second by Vice Mayor Spadowski. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? It passed unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to five point oh one. This is a hearing to authorize the negotiation of a development agreement to secure the dedication of open space and off-site public improvements. So with that, hand this off to staff. Oh, hand those to Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Marchand, members of the city council. The item before you is a request to authorize staff to negotiate terms and conditions of a pre-annexation and development agreement with a proposed developer. The applicant, Chick-fil-A, is requesting a general plan amendment and annexation to facilitate the development of a fast-food drive-thru restaurant located on North Livermore Avenue. A pre-annexation development agreement is required because the site is currently under Alameda County jurisdiction, and the city does not currently have the authority to approve any of these entitlements. As part of their request, the applicant has offered the dedication of approximately twenty-one acres of open space, that's shown here. The land contains certain biological and open space features that are valued generally by the city. However, because the dedication of this land is not part of any required city policy, the appropriate mechanism to offer and receive this land is done through a development agreement. In addition to securing the project's entitlements and the open space, staff requests the authority to negotiate for additional off-site improvements and amenities, including the construction of the Arroyo Las Pecitas Trail, as shown here. Trail exists currently at the end of the postal annex. The dotted line shows the segment that would be constructed potentially to the eastern terminus where it exists currently behind the Walmart property. Completion of this trail segment would fill a significant gap in that trail network. The Livermore Development Code requires the city council to authorize staff to negotiate any new development agreement. The agreement would come back to the council in conjunction with the other project entitlements, and authorizing negotiation of the development agreement does not predetermine any of the council's further actions. So that is to say that the council retains its discretion to revise or deny the development agreement when it does return to you. So with that, staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution and authorize staff to negotiate terms and conditions of a development agreement with Chick-fil-A as part of general plan amendment GPA sixteen dash zero zero four. And staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. With the twenty-one and a half acres of open space, what sort of access would be granted to that? And who would, who would be maintaining that extra parcel?
Sure, those terms would be subject to negotiation, access, maintenance, monitoring, and actually who would own it or manage a easement over the property. Those would all be negotiated during the development agreement process. It'd be subject to final authorization by the council. Uh, it'd be subject to final authorization by the council.
Okay.
So when it's brought, just so I'm clear, so when it's brought back to us, we would know more about the details regarding ownership and who would, to John's point, we'd know then?
Absolutely. The, the exact terms and timing would be in a draft development agreement for you to review.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions at this point? Oh, yes, I do. I just tried to take questions first. Okay. All right, uh, two cards, uh, Connie Cops and John Stein. Ms. Cops.
So is this the land that was purchased in 1973 from, um, Palomar? This is county land?
This is county land.
So when you get into a development agreement, like, when do you talk to, like, the county about this as well? Like, how does that work?
Hand this off. Oh, you go ahead and finish your comments and then we'll.
Oh, yeah, I just, I, I have a question because, um, that's just, um, you know, it was like concern, a concern that I had in the, in 4.07, and I get ignored a lot here, I feel. Um, and I really have true concerns about, like, past agreements on that land. Now, you, you're assuring me that there are no past agreements on that land. Then why isn't the history brought up in the report? I don't understand that. And then the other thing is, um, trying to phrase this here, um. So basically, I just want to see the, the full entire history of that property, you know, when you do bring it forward, because, um, there, you know, I, I know that's all supposed to be open space, but I think that was all supposed to be open space before. I'd like to see the history on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cops. So we, we, you said, well, they're bringing back a title report and presumably the, the ownership. Uh, but this is county land currently, and the idea is that for urban services to go to this site, it needs to be annexed by the city. Uh, and then that's when the negotiating agreement, uh, development agreement is, is, is finalized. But then before it's finalized, it comes back to the council, uh, for our, our input and consideration.
That's correct, and a more detailed discussion of property and its background, the general plan zoning, all that. Uh, those aspects of the property. In addition, you'll review the, uh, environmental documents prepared under the California Environmental Quality Act before you render a decision as well. So, any sort of, uh, past use dedications and, uh, biological presence of any species or anything would be, uh, looked at there. And the property is privately owned, uh, so, um, that's, uh, the application we have. We have had preliminary discussions with Laughco staff, uh, so they are aware of the application and that it's moving at least to this point.
Okay. And of course, Zone 7, since that's in the, uh, in the, the stream bed, Zone 7 is going to be also part of those, uh, those considerations.
Absolutely, it'll be a stakeholder in the negotiations.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Stein.
Uh, John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. Uh, it's an interesting piece of property in that, uh, it has a trailway that will go through it, the Las Pecitas Trail. Uh, and it's just the one missing link, so I would hope that high priority be given to that. Uh, it would also be nice if the trail could go under, uh, Livermore rather, Livermore Avenue, rather than, uh, be at a grade level crossing. But the, the problem is that the, um, stream or arroyo is down about 20 feet from the banks, so that might be a problem. Uh, there's also, uh, uh, heavy use on that, uh, uh, freeway interchange, particularly in the afternoon, and it would be nice to have a merging lane rather than, uh, just, uh, the traffic light, if that could be possible. But, uh, for, uh, the, the public's information, there is a stub street off of Las Pecitas that, that ends at that property. But I think before we go too much further, we need to know, uh, how the property will be used and who will maintain it. I mean, that could be an ongoing cost to the city. But on the other hand, the city does need more open spaces. We, uh, infill and keep increasing our population without adding parklands. So this would be accessible open space, uh, if the city so intended. It could be a park, a school site, uh, sports fields, uh, or it could be left as, uh, a grazing land and the tubos that are there every summer could continue to remain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Okay, uh, with that, that's all the comment cards that I have. I'm going to, uh, close the public hearing. Uh, comments? Councilmember Warner?
Well, I had some conversations earlier today that sort of, um, are in line with what, uh, Mr. Stein just said about a sports park. And I, I would just like to suggest that, um, and I, and I talked with Beth Wilson from LARPD and city staff, that, um, we explore the possibility of making it a sports park. And that, um, I'm not making it that, but of allowing it to be so that if city staff and LARPD and the, uh, owners could, um, at least contemplate that and see if it's feasible. And that, um, you know, it wouldn't be up to us. I'm just suggesting, because, uh, Councilmember Coomer and I were at an intergovernmental meeting recently, and it was pointed out that there's a great need for a sports park in the city and sites are, um, you know, at a premium. So it's, it has its issues with the arroyo and everything through that, and maybe, uh, wetlands, but, um, my understanding is it's not an impossible concept, so I would just suggest that, um, that be explored and as we, uh, negotiate through this.
Interesting idea. Okay. Uh, any other comments? Councilmember Carling?
Yeah, I just, uh, to Mr. Stein's point in getting across Livermore, um, that's also part of the plan. I mean, I understand the dotted line, but I do think it's important to make it, uh, you know, easily, to, to enable people to eas- easily get across Livermore. I mean, it is a pretty busy intersection at his point. Going under is probably maybe a challenge, but, uh, we ought to explore what we can do to make it safe for people to, to get across.
Councilmember Coomer?
Yeah, my first thought when I heard Mr. Stein speaking is I feel much the same way. I, we're, we're sorely behind in open space as well as sports parks. Uh, we know we have a need of sports parks as, uh, kind of like building a new lane on a freeway these days, is that by the time you build it and get it done, it's, uh, it's already at capacity. However, we're hardly setting aside enough property to, uh, to get out in the open anymore now. And completing that section of trail along there is, uh, and especially under the freeway. I appreciate that comment, because that's, that's a tough one to cross, you know? I don't know of any other in the East Bay except for crossing, uh, Crow Canyon on the, uh, Iron Horse Trail that is anywhere nearly as interesting, so, uh, it's, it's something to look under going beneath the freeway there. But, uh, I'm very intrigued by this, uh, potential project here and kind of interesting reading.
Yeah, there's the trail segment that goes under Holmes, and, uh, that's not quite as tricky as this one. But that's, uh, this is going to be, uh, going to be interesting. Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, and, and I think one of the, one of the challenges is that, um, that 20-foot culvert that staff mentioned. If you drive by on, on, uh, 580, you could see erosion happening there all the time. There's new, you know, dropouts and things happening along that culvert. And it is about, what, 20 feet? I mean, it's, it's pretty significant. So, um, I, I think the expense of, of, I mean, I, I still say look into it, but, you know, with ADA standards for, for trails and grades and things like that, that might be kind of an issue in terms of how expensive it would be to shore up that, that big of a drop and to make it, you know, future-proof for erosion. Um, I would think either, you know, it's, and, and that's something that, you know, when we get into more into the details about the development itself, I'd be interested to see, uh, because that seems like it's creeping on, on both sides, um, and what you do, uh, in, in terms of development. That's probably why the site hasn't been developed already. It's the access issues and that massive drop there. Um, so, I, I don't know. I, I think all the, the options are, are good to look at and, and, and something that, you know, finally get some action on that, that corner there.
I would have expected you to suggest maybe free-range chicken or something.
I, I am withholding all Chick-fil-A comments at this point, but, you know, when you bring up open space and Chick-fil-A, that's kind of a, you know, chocolate and peanut butter situation.
Free-range chicken, okay, you actually said that, okay. Any further discussion? Uh, is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
Okay, with the, uh, the other suggestions for, uh,
I'll just explore the options.
Okay, all right, so, motion by Councilmember Warner?
Second that, yeah.
Uh, second by Councilmember Coomer. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? It passed unanimously. Thank you very much, uh, for your comments. And, uh, now moving on to, uh, uh, the 5.02. This is the, uh, Fiscal Year Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, the CAAPER. All right, we have Claudia Young and Ty as well. Welcome aboard. We got Ty Robinson and Claudia Young. Very good. A little closer.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn and city council members. I would like to thank you for holding the public hearing on the city's consolidated annual performance and evaluation report known as the CAAPER. Since 1985, the city has received an annual community development block grant entitlement and home investment partnership funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. These programs are more commonly known as the CDBG and home programs. A condition of the city continuing to receive CDBG and home funds requires that the city do four things. One, hold a public hearing informing the citizens of Livermore how to allocate the federal funding received, identify the accomplishments that were achieved by the funded agencies, and to solicit feedback on those activities and accomplishments. Third, to identify how the city leveraged the CDBG funding and, and home entitlement funds with non-federal funding sources. And fourth, submit an annual CAAPER report to HUD. In fiscal year 2016-17, the city leveraged $476,714 of CDBG and home funds with $275,000 of local city funding sources. Total funding amount of $751,760 went to grants programs. Council awarded CDBG funds to 15 public and community-based organizations to implement 22 programs that provided assistance to over 10,000 low-income individuals and households made up of seniors, homeless persons, and disabled Livermore residents. Program activities covered a wide, a wide range of services for seniors and disabled persons, families, youth, the homeless, and homeowners in need of repairs. This concludes my presentation, and I would like to say that if, um, based on feedback that we give, we would make revisions to the report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. Uh, do you have any comments, questions at this point? Okay, uh, with that, uh, there's a public hearing. Uh, do you have any cards from the hearing?
Right there.
Oh, there we go. Sneaked up on me, okay. Uh, we have Greg Scott and Jane. Mr. Scott.
Honorable Mayor, City Council of Livermore, I'm Greg Scott. Uh, Mr. Mayor, we met last Wednesday when the mayor presented me with a certificate for graduating from Partners in Change. Whoops. On this issue of the CAAPER report, the Consolidated Annual Performance Environmental, um, report, I mean, environmental, evaluation report, excuse me, um, that's required for the, um, housing and urban development. I, I just have an overall question. Where do you expect the homeless to go? Okay, yesterday, the police, uh, the city of Livermore is arresting people for camping, uh, urban camping. Um, I just don't understand, you know, with all this money, when I, uh, read this community development block grant, I'm reading $366,714. Now, I'm not in, I'm not including the home investment partnership program because I'm talking to you specifically about homelessness. Now, of the CBDG money, you leverage $275,000 for a total of $641,714. So, as per the mentioned four, uh, goals, I'm going to read goal number two. Again, provide assistance to all persons or households who are on the verge of becoming homeless and those who are currently experiencing homelessness. I could tell you that's not happening. That goal is not being met, okay? The week before, I got a certificate from you for the Partners in Change, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I was in a Partners in Change, um, circle at Asbury Church, and I, I'm not sure all the people there were graduates, but I counted no less than seven people in the circle that are homeless. Now, your goal under this report on housing resources for homeless is expected program to find homeless is for 10. That means that the people in the circle I was in for Partners in Change, that was 70% of your goal. Now, the good news is that you placed 18. Congratulations. And I thank you for what you're doing. It just isn't enough. That, you're not going after the causality. You're, you're going after the symptoms, symptoms and throwing money at it. That's a Sisyphean task. You're going to be rolling the boulder up the hill forever on that and throwing endless money at it. Uh, by the way, um, on this, you placed 10, uh, and you actually did 18 on page 145 of your report. Um, the percent complete, you report 108%. Blow your own horn here. It wasn't 108%, you did 180% of that goal. So, uh, one of the things I'm saying is this report is not ready for prime time. Okay? Am I done with my three minutes?
Finish your comment. Finish your thought, please.
Okay, um, I know you can't solve all things on this problem at once, but I just, you need to start somewhere. And a place to start would be, a lot of people are in their cars and homeless. You need a place that's safe, sanitary, policed, where homeless can park there. Now, these homeless have to do at least three things. They can't be on drugs. They can't be, have alcohol on a site, and they got to pick up their trash, or they're out. But this, you need a comments. The problem is there's no comments for, and obviously, we got a comment tonight. Carnegie Park is not an acceptable commons, and, and the, the behavior going on there is inexcusable to the woman in her business, but we need small solutions. One would be a place where homeless can park their car and have, be safe and have sanitation and respect certain rules. The second thing you can do briefly is you, the, you report in this report that the rent from 2015 has gone up 32%, I'll, I'll be brief, 32% from 2015 to 2017, okay? But people, the landlords aren't taking the vouchers, the federal vouchers, or the rapid housing deal. And so there's an open thing for endless profit by a landlord, which is this problem is a cancer on this community. You, you need to go for the causality. If low income can't get into housing with these vouchers, then a source of income, a tax on landlords, something, because this, the inequity and the, and the social injustice and the economic injustice, it is eroding this community. Thank you.
Mr. Scott, thank you. Uh, Jane.
Hi. This is my first time doing this, so.
That's okay.
I'm going to try my best to be cordial. My name is Jane, and, um, I just wanted to share with you really quickly that, um, with going off on what he had just said with the finances and what's happening to all this money. Um, I am a single parent. I had become homeless in early 2016. I'm disabled. I have been for my whole life, and it's quite frightening to hear the story that this lady had just spoken about Carnegie Park. A lot of us are not like that, even though we're homeless. Um, and, uh, please forgive me, taking a deep breath here. Please forgive me, taking a deep breath here. We're just wondering where all these funds are going if they're not going for people with special needs. There's a lot of people that are homeless that have disabilities, and they need support and help with wheelchairs or walkers or whatever, but they're not getting it, just as is for that. But then, in the homing department, I don't even know what to say, because I have done every program, signed my name up on everything, and I am getting nowhere. I have two children I need to care for, and I know some of you have the same thing. Put yourself in my shoes, you know? I didn't ask to go to be homeless, I didn't ask to go to be divorced, it happens. And I'm just seeing what you can do to help me, and I appreciate you taking the time to hear me talk it out. Have a great night, thanks.
Thank you, Jane, for your comments. Then I'm going to close the public hearing. One of the things that I think the CAPER report does, and Mr. Scott mentioned the goals, and there's a tremendous amount of need. And as we pointed out in the last evaluation of this CAPER, we have seen the funds cut, these CBGDG and home funds, cut by 50% over the last few years. And this is in the face of increasing need. And unfortunately, we are constrained because there has to be a nexus for us to create a fee in order to provide a need. So, and that was, so it's very difficult. You can't just create fees to try to solve problems, there's got to be a nexus to it. And one of the things we did is we were able to acquire a small apartment complex, and we were able to convert those into studios specifically for the homeless. But a recent statistic that I saw is that recently, it is believed that in Alameda County, when the next waiting list is generated for the Section 8 vouchers, there will be 100,000 people on the waiting list. The need here is far more than any individual city can provide. So, we have acquired additional staff in order to leverage funds, the CBGDG, the home funds, and other funds coming in to, that we could get by grants, but there's a limited amount of funding that we have. And we do the best that we can to leverage those funds, to maximize the amount that we can get out into the community. And we, I believe last year, we had helped 10,000 people in the city of Livermore. 10,000? That's one out of eight. That's a tremendous amount of resources that we have to leverage in this community. There's a tremendous amount of need, and it's a regional need. Homelessness is not strictly a Livermore problem, it's a problem throughout the region, and something that we need to be able to work together as a region to solve. And it comes down to resources. And we've got, you know, 50% of our resources, over 50% for Livermore, is spent on public safety, police and fire. We've got a zero-sum game here. If we take money away from police and fire to put it into homeless programs, that's less police and fire, or it's less library, or it's less public works. So, it's a tremendous problem, and we're doing the best that we can to leverage the limited resources that we have. I agree, there's a huge need out there, and we're working very hard to try to bring the resources together, but as we're seeing, those resources even coming to the city are being cut. Mr. Haringa, would you?
Yes, I would like to add, you're correct, it's very difficult. Demand has gone up for the services, and federal, state funding has been reduced year after year. Yet, the city has, and I feel, a tremendous job with council support to create additional sources of programs and funding for programs and for various projects that we're now in the middle of, you know, that we hope to use to reduce the amount of homelessness in our community. One thing I would like to add, that staff, both Ty and Claudia, will be glad to talk with both the speakers and put them in contact with some of the agencies that we work with, who work with folks with disabilities, as well as our homeless programs, and see if there are services and that they could, that they may not be aware of, that they would be able to use. And we'll work directly with them and see how we may be able to help.
Okay, so if you could connect with Jane and perhaps share some resources as well. Councilmember Carling.
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Scott and Jane for having the wherewithal to get up in front of us and talk about their own particular situations. I agree with Mr. Scott that the report could do a better job of looking at the success that we've had. In fact, I talked to Mr. Haringa earlier today about some of the things that I think need to be updated in the report, so, thank you, Mr. Scott, for making that point. The other question I guess I had is, I think Mr. Scott has an interesting question about a site for people to park. I liked his three principles about what we would allow there, but it is an interesting idea, and I just don't know whether or not we've ever, have we ever considered something like that, or could we consider something like that?
We have not. Other communities have considered it. It is a very complex and time-consuming and expensive undertaking. We've got to look at it and see, you know, at the possibilities, but it is a very difficult thing to accomplish.
Do we have any idea how many people live in their cars?
No, our survey didn't cover that.
That's what I thought.
But perhaps Claudia or Ty might have some kind of estimate.
There was a business about seven, eight years ago that allowed travelers and homeless to use their parking lot. And unfortunately, because of issues and things, problematic behaviors, they finally had to discontinue that practice.
I think it might be worth looking at it again. I think it's an interesting idea. I'd like to hear more about it anyway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd go along, I'd back up Councilmember Carling on that also, because it's something that's come to mind many times. You know, these are people, just like us, no matter the problems, you know, and if we have some certain conditions on being able to stay there, and there is a shower, common restroom facility, or whatever needs to be done, where could we do it if we could do it? We know it will be controversial, but we also know that the controversy is nothing when you can ease some human suffering a little bit. And I'd sure like to see if we can come up with any kind of ideas anyway, just brainstorm on it.
We should probably pull this back again under Matters Initiated.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
You know, there are comments or questions at this point?
No, I, you know, you hear the stories, and they're truly heart-wrenching. And then you look at the fact that the money at the, you know, the federal and state level is decreasing, you look at all the pressures in the Bay Area, it's like, what do you do? And, you know, as has been pointed out, Livermore can't solve the region's problems. But I do agree that we can continue to be creative and think this through. The other thing I would want to say from this report is, you know, it's, you know, half-empty, half-full, but it's not even half-full because of such a great need. But I just wanted to point out that the, you know, the building that's going on, or the sites that are being made available, I just wanted to commend the efforts in that area. When you look at that list on page 153, 154, I mean, there's, there's things happening, of course not enough, but there is, you know, McLeod, First Street, North M Street, North End Street, Chestnut Street, Railroad Avenue, a couple of places there. So, there are efforts being made that I think are substantial, but they're small in comparison to the overall need for the Bay Area, but there's still, we're, I think Livermore is making a great effort, so I commend you for doing that. One thing that might be interesting to have is, do we have any statistics on the efforts we're making compared to our fellow cities in the Tri-Valley? I mean, how do we compare? And I would just like to know that. I think we're probably doing okay, but it'd be good to know. That's not to say that we shouldn't continue to do more, but it'd be worthwhile knowing.
Okay. Well, I think one interesting point is that there are five shelters for the disadvantaged, the abused, and the homeless in the Tri-Valley, in the five-city Tri-Valley, there are five of them. They're all in Livermore. All the shelters are in Livermore. And I think that speaks to the type of community that we are, is we do care about looking after those that are in need, and that Livermore certainly stepped up. Is it enough? There's always going to be a greater need. And I commend Mr. Scott for, you know, committing to go through the program and working to continue to improve your situation. I wish you the best of luck, and the city is trying to leverage the programs and the funding that we can to meet really an overwhelming need. The reason for the urban camping ordinance was strictly to address problematic behavior that was going on primarily in our arroyos. We had people that were turning our arroyos into latrines, and there are children that play on those arroyos. And it gave the city a mechanism to go in and clean up problem areas, and that was really the basis for that. We're happy to let people to live in peace, but when it impacts the public health and safety of others, that's when the city has to step in and take action. But this is a, it is a huge problem, there's no question. And with the increasing property values, increasing rents, it's becoming more and more difficult. But you have the commitment of the five people that are up here. We will continue to work to address these problems and leverage the resources that we have to the best of our ability. So, thank you again for coming tonight, we certainly appreciate your comments, and you have our commitment to continue to work on this. So, thank you. Okay, with that, is there a motion?
Just a quick comment, sorry.
Not at all.
If you're looking at the report, page 151 to 164 outlines everything that we're doing. And I think, and the mayor used the term leverage, and so did Councilmember Warner. And I think that's what our goal is, is to leverage our funds to support other organizations and to really try and make a difference. Maybe we're spread too thin? I mean, that's a lot of actions, but then what do you drop? And we're trying to help many different situations, not just focus on one or two. So, I think we're doing a good job with what we have. We're doing, I think, the best that we can with what we have. In particular, as we mentioned before, you know, there's, there was a section in here about 40, you know, faith-based and service-based organizations that we're coordinating with to try and address this problem. And I would hazard a guess that we are doing probably the best job, so to speak, if you can quantify that, out of any city in our area, and that's scary. Just to think that, you know, our efforts, we can't help everybody, and yet, you know, we're trying to do our best. So, it is, it's an age-old question. I mean, what do we focus on? Where's the money coming from? And what solutions can we provide? But I do thank staff for the report. I think it did an excellent job outlining what we're doing. Again, I don't know where to leave it, but just continue doing what you're doing, and then any ideas that you do have, we're more than happy to look at and investigate. But it's just, it's, no one's really come up with a solution yet. It's just a difficult issue.
Well, we just had the housing bond that passed, and, let's see if I can get these numbers right. There is a deficit of, I believe, 100,000 housing units in Alameda County, and the Measure A bond is going to provide housing for, I believe it was about 6,000 units. And that was a half-billion-dollar bond. So, even with that, even with the county resources, that's barely scratching the surface. This is not good news for anybody, but it just, it underscores that this is a tremendous problem.
And as a further point on that, the housing bond, staff has already identified four projects that will be using some of that bond money.
Here in Livermore.
Here in Livermore.
And we're getting both sides of it, as I recall. There's the discretionary money and also the formula money.
That's correct.
So, we're on track to get both of those, because some Tri-Valley cities have declined that money. They're declining the low-income housing money because they don't want that. So, we may actually be on track to get more. Now, we commit 15% of all new housing that goes in is to be affordable housing. That's one of the things that we have locked in. But on the other hand, affordable housing in the Tri-Valley is $80,000 a year. But we also have affordable housing and then low and very low income. So, we try to have a large mixture, but it's still, it's very difficult, and we're doing the best we can. It's not enough, but we're doing it. Okay. With that, do I have a motion?
Well, I would just, one other comment. I think we, you know, we're doing what we can, but the suggestions that, I mean, we're open to being creative, and it was mentioned earlier, I mean, it was a very compelling question of where do we expect them to go? And there was a suggestion as to, you know, the safe parking. So, I think we're open to it, but then we also have to figure out how to do it in a practical manner, and I, so I, you know, it's just, as I said, heart-wrenching to have to deal with this. So, and, but I do believe we're open to any practical solution here. So, I will so move the item.
Staff, your main issue, okay. Councilmember, by Councilmember Warner.
I'll second with the assumption that the updates that Mr. Haringa and I discussed this afternoon will be included in the report, as well as the notes that I'm going to give him at the end of this about some other changes that I'd like, some updates and editing in the report as it stands today.
All right. Okay, any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Passed unanimously. All right, well, thank you again. Thank you very much for your comments tonight, and you can see, we're still struggling with this, and we're still going to do everything we can to keep working toward a solution. So, thank you. And that is Jenny, isn't it? Good to see you.
Homeless vet for five years.
There were, in our, in our survey, we found that there were less than 10% of vets that were homeless in the area that were receiving their benefits.
Yeah, I tried with the HUD VASH, and nobody in Livermore Pleasanton, Dublin, San Antonio. I had it in 2014, my HUD VASH voucher, Section 8 for veterans, and nobody would accept it. And it wasn't enough money for them.
All right, that's something, I've actually gone back and spoken with the Secretary of the VA to try to get that resolved, so we're still working on that. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I think the survey you referred to is how two years old.
I think we finished that in...
Fall of 2015, as a result of your homeless summit on April 30th, 2014.
No, it's the survey that you...
Year and a half, okay.
So, that is 2015 data. Remember, the rent has gone up 32% for those two years.
Right. It just underscores that the problem is getting more and more difficult to grapple with.
Mayor Mashawn, if I may interrupt, we're not on any agenda item at the moment. If you would like to put something like this on a future agenda, that could be done.
On Matters Initiated, and I believe we're right on that right now. Okay, thank you.
So, I just mentioned, I was the instigator of taking the survey, and it was a while ago, and the concept at the time was to do it periodically.
Okay, so with that, we are at Matters Initiated, and Councilmember reports. So, let's start at this end this time. Councilmember Coomer.
Well, I've got a couple of things...
Well, I got a couple of things here. I had a LAFTA Finance Administration meeting, which turned out to be an epic or a Finance Administration meeting, which is generally a twenty-minute to half-hour affair. It went for two hours as we got a presentation pertaining to BART. And without going into too much detail, it was, it got contentious, and I think the BART guy doesn't want to see us again anytime soon. He had to handle a lot of controversy from the members of the LAFTA board, who were pretty much, well, one of the BART directors was actually there, too. And it got very interesting, but I had never sat there two hours of that before. That was a new plus. But we got an overview of what it will take, a little bit, what they're thinking of getting BART to Livermore. And on so many levels, I had so many questions, and not the least of which was, at what point did we permit BART to get into our city planning that deeply? So, I'd, that was only the first thing, not to mention rail yards up the way, and on the other side of the, in North Livermore, and all those things. So, anyway, it got a little contentious there, but we got through it. The second, we, last Thursday morning, had a intergovernmental meeting. Councilmember Warner and myself were there. And I think the highlight, at least to me, and I know Councilmember Warner will have a minute to talk about it, too, is we pulled out equaling leash laws between the city and LARPD as to how long a leash can be to have your dog running around. We now have a standard for that that is citywide. But the most important part was getting an update on how the public property between the city and LARPD is being rebuilt. The creeks, the arroyos are being restored, the trails being fixed. And there was extensive damage, and we've already alluded to that. The mayor has alluded to the 5.8 million, I think, we're at this, so far, so far. And it's, it was encouraging to see and hear, you know, get out of that meeting and get out of the trail and see that there were riprap being dumped into the arroyos and it being spread around, the trails being packed with dirt again and going to be repaved soon. So, good to see that it's on the way. They've only got till October, I believe, until they have to stop working for the rainy season. So, they're really busting it right now in several different locations. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Carling?
Yes, thank you. So, since we met last time, I participated in the League of California Cities Meeting in Sacramento Conference and Expo that's held every year in the fall. This year was in Sacramento, next year it's in Long Beach. I guess they switch back and forth. This was my first opportunity to participate in that meeting. I was the only elected there, but a number of the city's staff participated in the meeting as well. They have a number of workshops pertaining to city business, and there are many meetings going on at the same time. So, you sort of have to pick and choose which ones you want to attend. Mark and I also had the opportunity to accept, on behalf of the city, the Beacon Spotlight Award for some of our work in terms of creating or using green technology, or trying to work toward improving the environment. An example that got us into the gold category was the solar receiver field that's out behind the library, just to give you a sense of what goes into the evaluation about the Beacon Spotlight Award. Following that, I went to New England, where we enjoyed the remnants of Jose the Hurricane for several days. So, I just got back yesterday. I do, in Matters Initiated, I do want to move forward with asking the staff to look at Mr. Scott's suggestion about a place for the homeless to park their vehicles if others of my colleagues would agree with that, so.
If you could bring back some additional information on that.
Yeah. Would you please? Thank you.
Councilmember Warner?
So, as was mentioned by Councilmember Coomer, the intergovernmental meeting, and there were two things, maybe three things. But one was the leash law, and so will align LARPD and the city. Hopefully, the paragraph won't be too long in coming, but it's sorely needed so that we can have some kind of enforcement. And the only thing I would, and we also heard a story of someone, one of the people in the meeting, that actually had been recently attacked by a dog that wasn't on a leash. So, it is, it is a real need for the leash law. I think not everybody will obey it, but I would just urge people to do so, because, and I've seen a couple of instances since I've lived here of dogs out of control, and even though people think they might have it under voice control, it doesn't always work, especially when people are passing each other. So, the concept, though, is when somebody, even if you have a retractable leash, that it is shortened to six feet when you're passing someone else, to keep it in control. So, I think that's necessary, and I would just urge people to follow the rule. The other thing is that there was the discussion, as I mentioned earlier, about the sports park and the fact that the city, for a long time, there's lots of people have been asking for it for decades. And one of the concepts that had initiated at the intergovernmental meeting in the past was to get an overlay map between the facilities that the city has, that LARPD has, and the school district has, and to also say, that's what we've got. And then, where are the available sites? And then, where is the most need coming from that we've heard? And try and get in advance of that. And that's why it resonated when, based on that meeting, when I saw this meeting, the opportunity at North Livermore, is that, we should consider it a sports park. There aren't too many good places to do it, and it does take a lot of acreage. So, I would hope, you know, we could get some sense of where we're going and get in advance, you know, some kind of strategic vision as to where we want to go, and for the three agencies to kind of align on what that vision is. So, that was the intergovernmental meeting. The other one was the Altamont Open Space Meeting, and we're making some progress there. And I will admit that that group hasn't met as often as it should have perhaps, or we haven't. Some progress is not moving as quickly as possible. But one of the things we want to do there is get a sense of what lands are most use or valuable from the Altamont Open Space point of view to acquire if we could. And so, we're possibly going to make some progress in hiring a consultant. The city of Livermore has kind of approved it, but the other cities have to get behind it. But then, we could be more proactive in just letting the word out as to where we would like to acquire things if we could, to complete trails, et cetera. With respect to Matters Initiated, I was moved by what was mentioned at Carnegie Park. And in particular, you know, the point was made that there's a time delay between when the call is made and the police can respond, and the behavior can't be seen. So, I would like to suggest that there may be a little bit more proactive monitoring of the area, especially in the mornings, and I could get concurrents, so that we could maybe, for some time period, assign the appropriate resources to make sure that the behaviors that we've heard about are abated.
You have four nods, five nods?
Yeah, I had something to add to that.
Go ahead.
Yeah. And it was under my matters, but I'll tag on to your matter there.
That's trouble with being vice mayor. You get to go second, right?
Yeah. Second to the last. It would be great to get a report from staff as to what the conditions are there, what enforcement actions have been already enacted in the area, and then what are our options? Anything else? If the monitoring, I agree, but anything else that we can do proactively, because nobody can condone that, that kind of behavior. And we need to figure out what's going on. So, it doesn't have to be back to the council as an item. It could be a memo or an email, hopefully sometime in the near future.
Right. Yeah. That's better said.
Well, I, building on your...
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
Of course. So, the, and then the last thing is that I did hear Mr. Stein mention about the workshops. I think it might be a little bit, with everything else that's going on downtown, et cetera, we may not want to initiate it now, but we just keep it on the list. It was a good idea, and at the appropriate time, we might think about it.
And rolling on, I'll do the Matters Initiated before reporting out, but did I hear Matters Initiated with the sports park issue, or is that being handled at intergovernmental, that we get kind of a comprehensive view of the available?
It's the intergovernmental is where, well, trying to get the, this overlay map, the three agencies, and we did initiate it there, and I think the various agencies are working on it. It just is, and it's not just the sports park, but what are the needs from the community? And the three agencies, the city, the school district, and LARPD have facilities. And so, to kind of get a complete view of what's there and what's needed, and try and figure it out. So, that's being handled there.
That's good, as long as somebody's working on it, because the sports park keeps bubbling up. I think it is desperately needed. Looking forward to that, whatever comes out of that, that group. In particular, you know, some sense of urgency that we identify parcels before they go away, or, you know, who knows? If we didn't have the intergovernmental agency, we could have dedicated this to open space and never even thought about a sports park. And, you know, a lot of people do comment, we have plenty of fields. They're playing soccer all over the place, but the goal of a sports park is it's in one location. So, when people have the tournaments, they are not going from one side of town to the other, and then they have to play. It's all in one centralized location. Many communities have that. You see Dublin's right along the freeway there. So, I think it would be helpful. But anyway, I'll stop on that one. So, a couple items to mention. Last week, I had an East Bay Community Choice Energy meeting. We have hired an executive director, and they are in process of hiring additional staff. Everything is on track. In the next year or so, residents should start to receive information on exactly what community choice energy is. But the goal is to provide energy through Alameda County. Residents will be able to choose if they want to purchase their power from Alameda County or PG&E. And there are certain advantages to procuring our own power in terms of green energy, renewable energy, and then investing back in the local community. So, it's great that we have an executive director on board. They're hiring staff. There were some bills submitted with this last legislative cycle that were designed to make it more difficult to implement a community choice energy program, but they were all defeated. So, they didn't get to the governor's desk, which is a good thing. We had several LAFTA meetings, as Councilmember Coomer mentioned about BART's presentation. The only comment that I have right now, it's interesting to see certain organizations' views of reality. I don't necessarily agree, nor would many people. So, we're in the process of commenting on that, I believe, as a city. And is that coming back at the next council meeting, where we'll see the EIR comments? Yes. I see Sheri. Oh, there's Sheri. Okay. I could tell she's been working on it. She looks kind of sad. So, anyway.
October 9.
October 9, or maybe not. All right. And then, also, the other item to report out from wheels, we had our tri-transit-to-school program. It's an annual program where, for a two-week period, students will ride transit for free. This year, we had a whopping thirty-five percent increase in ridership. Almost twenty thousand students rode transit for free in the first two weeks. And happy to report that we retained a lot of that ridership. So, they rode the first two weeks for free, and now they're continuing to ride the bus. So, it's a great, great program, and I'm glad to hear the progress. The only other item, this Sunday, Hagman Ranch had an ice cream social. For those of you who have not visited Hagman Ranch, please do so. It's a great facility. Things are coming along nicely there. They have a wonderful gourd tunnel. So, it's this, you can see it as you're driving along the road. It's this nice structure of all of the vines, and the gourds are just hanging there, and you can walk right through it. I got some great, great pictures. But they had a great music, wonderful tours. It's really cool to see kids go up to a horse for the first time. That was, you know, oh, can I, can I touch it? And can I feed it? And it's like, yeah, you know, go ahead. So, there's a lot of great things happening at Hagman Ranch. I believe they try to do one event every Sunday per month, so check their Facebook page and make sure you get on out there. That's it.
All right. September 20th was the Altamont Regional Working Group, or whatever we're calling that thing now, the San Joaquin.
ASJ RW.
Alameda County San Joaquin Regional...
EIO, I think.
Yeah, right.
Something like that, yeah.
McDonald. So, it's the Joint Powers Group, which was actually legitimized by the passage of AB 758. So, that did pass after being in its death throes. It came out of committee and actually got passed. So, that is, it, well, not quite yet. I don't believe the governor has signed it yet. So, we're still waiting on that. But the purpose of AB 758 was to create a joint powers authority to study and to ultimately recommend and construct a BART-to-Ace connection. And we got to find out what the best one is, and partnering, or building upon that, the BART EIR, we heard at the meeting. And I think it was the fifth time I've seen the presentation. It gets better every time. But the interesting thing is, if you look at the vehicles mile traveled reduced, the greenhouse gas reduction, the number of drivers and cars taken off the road, full BART to Livermore is the best, greatest value of any of the projects. It gets off more drivers, reduces more greenhouse gases than any other mode that they suggest, whether it's bus, the diesel multiple units, the electric multiple units, that's EMU. No, it's not a large flightless bird, but it's the electrical multiple units, not the EMU. But had the presentation on that. So, there is talk of putting a yard in Livermore, and there's some discussion about why the city of Livermore would be assessed twenty-five percent of the cost of a yard when it's about one-ninth of the distance for that last five miles, or it's about fifteen percent of the cars. So, we're still in negotiations on that, and still in discussion. When we release our Isabel Neighborhood Plan, then BART comes back eventually and makes their final recommendation for the mode, and then the discussion starts all over again. So, we're still working on that. On the 21st, we had the Chamber State of the State. Catherine Baker came and spoke to members of the chamber and the community as well, followed by a local agency formation commission, it's called LAFCO. And this, we had a presentation of Planned Bay Area, which is a really interesting thing, where they're talking about bringing in more housing into the urban core, where they have transit already established. But one of the issues that they're talking about, increasing the number of jobs by forty-three percent, and increasing the amount of housing by thirty percent, which means we're still in gridlock. We're still locked in with people trying to get over the hill, trying to get to Silicon Valley. So, it just underscores the need to create a robust transit system like connecting BART to ACE and bringing BART out to Livermore. We also went over the municipal services review, and some cities out there in Alameda County are not necessarily in nearly as good a shape as Livermore is. So, we looked very closely at the service provision of the, or the provision of resources in the city of Livermore, and we're doing a very good job, especially compared to everybody else. We also, that, later that day on the 21st, was the 30th anniversary of the Valley Humane Society. They're actually located in Pleasanton, and they've been serving the Tri-Valley for thirty years and doing a great job of it. The 22nd was the American Indian Day at the Shea Plaza in front of the Bankhead Theater, had probably a hundred people out there celebrating Native American heritage. It was a great day, and they erected a twenty-two-foot-tall teepee. And that was, that was pretty impressive, to see how that thing goes up. And the 24th was one of the fun things we get to do. That was the Altamont Cruiser Car Show. It's the 28th year that the Altamont Cruisers have done this show. They collect money to support DARE programs, the programs to keep kids off drugs... off drugs and, uh, to maintain and stay, stay in education. Great program. And, uh, one of the other fun things I get to do is I get to award the mayor's car. So, I don't really have to know anything, I just pick out the one I like. Uh, and it was a nineteen thirty-four Ford Tudor sedan. Uh, and the cool thing it was, it was called Paz Old Car. That was the license plate. And they actually had the original invoice for the car. In nineteen thirty-four, it cost five hundred thirty-one dollars. Uh, the cream-colored wheels cost thirty dollars and ninety cents. Uh, and when I presented the award to the, uh, to Dan Buchart, uh, he told me that, uh, his dau- his granddaughter, his granddi- granddaughter was going to become a teacher. She just had one test left to go. Uh, she was going to become a teacher because she was inspired, uh, by my wife, Mrs. Marshand, when she was a student teacher at Sunset Elementary. So, it's continuing that tradition. So, it was, uh, uh, very cool, fun stuff. So, uh, with that, there being no further, uh, business coming before the council, I adjure in the meeting to, uh, October 9th. Thank you.